This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening, Clerk, please start the recording. Today is Wednesday, November 12th, 2025, and I'd like to call tonight's City Council meeting to order. If we could all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Clerk, can I please have roll call? You're okay.
Councilmember Fox.
Present.
Councilmember Casper.
Here.
Councilmember Boyle.
Present.
Councilmember LaHa.
Present.
Councilmember Servini.
Present.
Mayor Strobin.
I am here tonight. All right, so before we move on to Citizens' Public Comment, I am going to say a few things and start a few things, and then we'll move on to Public Comment. Yesterday was Veterans Day, and I'd like to take the time to honor all those veterans that have served, are serving, or are no longer with us. I'm going to read something that I read at a speech in 2023 that I did at the memorial, yeah, for the City of La Center. Just a portion of it that I find very important and stands true to today, tomorrow, and yesterday, actually. Of all the veterans I've met that were in war, they all had one thing in common: They didn't talk about what they saw. They couldn't, not because of an order from their superiors, but because it's too painful. Many of these veterans are still suffering after their return. And bring this to your attention, because 22 veterans take their own lives every day. Their burden is too much to bear. This shouldn't be the end of these brave men and women, and together, society must change that. So if you know a veteran, or somebody that has served, or even doesn't have to be a veteran, but they're having problems in their life, please reach out to those people and guide them to an area that they can get help. I would appreciate it, and I'm sure most everybody in the room would agree to that. At this point, I'd like to do a little something different than I've done in the past for handing out my pens. These are flag pens. This is something I do for veterans each year. So if I could have veterans come up here to the front, I'd love to give you a pen in honor of your service. This way we're on camera, and people can see it's actually you in the right name, right? All right. What's your name?
Kim.
Kim? Oh, Kim, yes. How you doing? Good. Thank you very much for your service. Let me throw one at you, right? Sorry. Kimberly?
Hi.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm still serving.
You're still serving?
Thank you.
Service.
Service.
Dave?
How are you?
Thank you, I appreciate your service.
You're more important, isn't that?
No, I don't want to interrupt the council.
Oh, gosh.
You're a part of the picture.
You're in front of me. I'm going to climb up on this chair.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, guys. Okay, well, that wasn't scripted. That was off the top of my head, a lot of it. All right. Clerk, can we please call up any public comments from the audience?
Al Filler.
Al, please remind everybody of the playoff game Saturday.
Yes, on Saturday, the football team plays, C-Team Catholic, at Camus High School at seven o'clock. It'd be a real good game, should be. Also, the bridge, anybody seen there at Go Across the Night? I don't go across the night very often, but, you know, the red, white, the blue lights, and the brand-new flags? I'm out of the way. But now, back to my... You all see this? C-Train giving out passes to veterans. Takes about five minutes to get it. And I went down, it's right there, Van Goober Mall, there's a little building there, you walk up, and the gal, she's real nice, and, like I said, they take your picture, everything else, they laminate it, all in, it's great. And you know what? Once I got it, I got to try it out. So what did I do? I went over to our friend who parked the ride, and I caught the bus. And I caught it up to Galen A. So what do I do for an hour and a half waiting for the... Well, you realize, you can take the bus up there for free when you got this, and then you can go in and get a free cup of coffee to drink, you know? You know, there'd be plenty of money up there so they can give that stuff away, and I'll take full advantage of it. But I also found something else. I thought maybe I could catch the bus when it came back and go from Galen A to La Center. Nope. To get back to La Center, you gotta go clear, you know, catch it, go into Ridgefield, to Hazeldale, catch the bus again, and come back out. You know? But it's great. But it's... But again, I'm tired, I got a lot of time. But there's a little thing, you know, because we have our C-Train representatives, who's talked about it. And actually, I pay attention to them every once in a while. And one of these, he's looking on his computer, not paying attention to me.
No, I'm taking notes right now.
But you can call the connector. So there I am, with bus depot up there, bus stop up there, and I called the connector, and they said, there, it's right there on my phone, it says you'll be there in 10 minutes. So sure enough, he comes around the roundabout, driving right by the bus stop, pulls over to the casino, clear across the parking lot. So maybe there's a little thing, you know, maybe they're mixed up a little bit, so I had to screw over there, and I got there, I'm talking to the guy, and he says, oh gee whiz, I swear, I always go up, you know? And I said, well, I was at the bus stop, I waited, and you drove on. He said, oh, okay, you know? And so I told him, I'm going to the parking ride in La Center. And he said, yeah, I know, it's right here on the computer, oh boy, it was great. So we come down, we cross the bridge, we get up, and you know, we drive right on by, you know where the parking ride is, according to him? Across from Molly Park, where it's... And then I explained to him where the parking ride was, which I didn't like, never have liked it being there anyway, so this was sort of a confirmation that, yeah, we're doing good, you know? But anyway, and I told him where to go, there's Sixth and Virgin, up down, but again, that's where my car was, that's where I kind of wanted to go back there. You know, so anyway, I just wanted to let you know these things work, and there are other passes, too, if you can get me Sean Boyle on that. But thank you, God bless America.
Thank you, Al. Before you call up any, can you make sure you take note of that? Yeah. For the board.
You want to come to the C-Train Board meeting next Tuesday? They also have a public comment. But I will pass your information along.
Thank you.
Dennis Hill.
Dennis Hill, 1316 West Alder Place. Good evening, Mayor, City Council, and La Center citizens. On tonight's agenda, our tonight's, our tonight's agenda would indicate that the City Council and Mayor are considering an increase in our property taxes, if you haven't noticed that on the agenda. So we, the citizens, so that the citizens can better understand why this increase is necessary, I'm requesting that the City Council and the Mayor present to the La Center citizens what cost-cutting measures have or are planned throughout the city for 2026. If there are cost-cutting measures, why aren't they sufficient to balance our budget? How much are we spending on consultants/outside services? And how has this grown over the past several years? It appears to me, as we continue to grow our staff, isn't there some of our staff that are qualified to do some of the work that some of our outside services we're paying for can do? And I ask only share all these things, is that I think that we, as citizens, at least I would, would like a little better understanding of why we're going to be asking for more money, and what we've done to try to balance the budget within our means, and asking each of our department heads to cut back where they can show, anyways, I think that would be good for us as citizens to see where in our city, the city is actually doing some cost reductions to help this overall issue. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dennis.
Kimberly Gohean Elbin. Good evening. Kimberly Gohean Elbin, is this on? I can't hear. So it was announced to me from a few concerned citizens as to the Walk and Run event last Sunday, and I would like transparency as to, is this town of La Center going to apply for grants pertaining to this event? Also, I noticed tax dollars spent for the street sweeping truck, and I guess for purposes of safety, I get that, but please tell us who paid for it, if it was the people of the event or the taxpayer. Again, I have a great concern as to our sewer plant, and I read that the membranes were cleaned with chlorine, and asking again if this cleaning was then dumped or drained into the Lewis River. I'm asking for an environmental and ecology study on the downflow of where the sewer dumps the wastewater into our Lewis River, and it's for health purposes of our children and all animals and fish and life, let alone the plants. Under safety, today, there's going to be a road rage awareness training, and there are a bunch of crazy drivers out here now that have moved in. So I'm, I'd like to know if the training is open to the public, and it should be, and it should be well advertised. I've noticed that La Center taxes go to indigent defense, and I'm asking for an in-depth audit as to how these funds are spent and how they benefit my son, Cleve Goheen Rango, and the inadequate public defense that he has received, or in his case, he has not received at all, really. His court-appointed attorney did not show up for an important hearing. Cleve and I were there to witness absolute chaos as lead public defense Mr. Christopher Swady fumbled for over 10 minutes on record, stating that he had no clue where Cleve's attorney was. And then, on an email, because I was talking with him on emails and stuff, he lied to cover up the absolute violation of Cleve's constitutional rights under the law. He was a free man up to that point, and now he's been in jail since August 5th. In Clark County, a law and justice system is broken, to say the least, and I'm asking for our local elected authorities here to investigate. As far as the Planning Commission, last, a few days ago, I was on the phone for over an hour, I could not hear any of the meeting, it was very sporadic, if I did, and I believe that might be why they put out a new agenda, I always print off the copies as soon as I can, and now today you see a new one with the Planning Commission, the Manning place that they're going to build, new homes, is not on this today. I think that we need for transparency, when you do change the agenda, that you put notice on there, I know all the other council meetings do, that it was updated, it has to be updated. Also, last but not least, I'm going to be starting a Facebook page, it'll be titled "Treats in La Center, Washington."
Okay, thank you, Kimberly. Thank you. We're not here to promote that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any other public comments, Clerk?
No other comments from the audience.
All right. Any public comments from those calling in, please press star six to unmute yourself, state your name and address for the record. All right, Clerk, are there any public comments to be read?
No public comments to be read.
Thank you. Next up is the Consent Agenda. I do want to bring up something for council and the audience to know. Janine, are you with us? Is she with us?
Yes, I am. Hello and good evening.
Hi, Janine.
There we go.
So I have an announcement, a very unfortunate, sad announcement, but also exciting times as well. Janine will be leaving the service of La Center and joining Ridgefield full-time. We're going to be sad to see her go, but excited for her future with her full-time employment over at Ridgefield, so we will get to work together, all of us, with her, at least some more in the future. With that, you'll find on the Consent Agenda, the Professional Service Agreement for City Attorney Services is for Lighthouse Law Group, and that's with Beth Ford. She would be La Center's new city attorney, if you vote the Consent Agenda in. If that happens next Wednesday, I've asked Beth to come and introduce herself to you guys and to the audience and the residents as a whole. So, Janine, you have any words that you'd like to say? I know I'm putting, but I know that wasn't in no scripts or anything, so...
No, no problem at all, but I just wanted to say thank you to the council for giving me the opportunity to serve and the chance to work with the amazing staff that you all have. It has been a real pleasure, and I'm going to very sincerely and sorely miss working with you. It was an opportunity that just hit at the right time, and it's the right choice for me right now, but I am, I'm going to be looking with, watching everything you do with admiration from afar, because I really have enjoyed my time here. And feel free to call me if you have any, anything comes up, or just to say hi, I'm still around.
And she's, we're going to keep her and Beth together until the end of her term, which would be the December 31st, so January 1st would be her last, or December 31st would be her last day, January 1st would be Beth's full-time day without Janine's help, so just so you know. I wanted to make sure that was clear on the Consent Agenda, in case you were wondering why you've seen some more attorney services on there. Thank you again, Janine, and we'll get to the Attorney's Report after here. So if there's no, or no items to be removed, can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion passes. Thank you, council. All right, Mayor's Report. And I've got pens on here, but I wanted to bump that up to the beginning of the meeting, because I thought that that was just more important than us speaking, so. Santa House calls Friday, December 5th, 5:50 p.m. to 8:30 p.m. We do extend it a little bit longer if we've got a lot of houses. We're already getting sign-ups. We love it, we love seeing this come in. The sign-ups are now open on the La Center Christmas Festival website, and that's lacenterchristmasfestival.com. Go on there, sign up. All we ask is that there's a gift for those in need. Santa comes to your house in the fire truck, gives the kids a candy cane, takes a picture, and then off to the next house. And currently, we have three trucks and three Santas that are going to be making the rounds. And then there's a bunch of helpers, a lot of volunteers to make this happen. All the gifts go into the Giving Tree, and the Giving Tree stays local, it's the La Center Lions Giving Tree. The La Center Christmas Festival is December, Sunday, December 7th, 12 p.m. to 6 p.m., right here on Fourth Street downtown. For a full list of those activities through the day, visit the lacenterchristmasfestival.com website, and there you'll see everything that's happening. We have some new stuff that's happening this year, and some of the same traditions that have been built upon for the last few years. City offices will be closed November 27th and the 28th for Thanksgiving, and I'll make that announcement again next week, just to remind everybody. Our next City Council meeting is next week because of Thanksgiving. I don't think anybody really wants to be here the night before Thanksgiving, unless you want to have a turkey dinner together, which would be kind of fun, wouldn't it?
As long as you're cooking.
Yeah. All right. Our December City Council meetings have changed, they'll be December 10th and December 17th. The December 17th meeting, I'm going to make the announcement now, we are going to be doing a different type of council meeting that night. There'll still be a City Council meeting, but we'll also be doing a State of the City address, and this meeting will not be at City Hall, it'll be over at the Community Center. All right, I encourage everybody to come on and attend. We're going to have updates from our staff and myself, and then go through our normal City Council meeting that night. And I believe we are bringing some goodies, if I can remember correctly. I mean, yeah, yeah, some goodies. So I think that is about it for tonight. I'm sure I'll have a list for you next week. All right, next up is the Attorney's Report. Janine, since I already spilled the beans, I guess we don't need to skip that part, right?
Yep, it is me again, but I don't have anything new to report, just again to say thank you, and again to say, let me know if there's any projects you want to make sure we get wrapped up by the end of the year, I'm happy to help however I can.
Thank you, Janine. Any questions for the city attorney?
No questions, but I just wanted to say thank you, Janine, we appreciate your work.
Yes, thank you.
Very welcome.
This is Councilmember Boyle, and I would like to extend my thanks for your service here at the city. You've been a great resource for me along the way here, as the time that you've been with us with the C-Train, things that are going on, and getting some clarification on a lot of things, and I just really appreciated you being there and able to help with some of that stuff.
And I can't not say but a thank you from Myrna, Councilmember Myrna LaHa. Thank you, Janine, it's been great working with you.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Janine. Thank you, council. Next up, Council Comments, Councilmember Fox.
Hello, good evening, glad to see everyone here. As I finish out the end of my four years, the next couple months, I'm just going to soak up these last four meetings, and I just appreciate seeing so many familiar faces that have been here for the last four years, and I know you folks have been here way before that, so I just thank you for all that you do to support La Center. I'm not going anywhere, still love La Center, still going to show up to some meetings, I still want to keep involved, just still very proud of La Center. Mom, just excited for what's next for the council and for the city, but I know it's, all is going to be well. Very excited for the football game on Saturday, nothing makes me more proud, seeing number 17 as a freshman, you know, suit up at the varsity game, he's, you know, he hangs out on the sidelines for the most part, but maybe a minute or so at the end, he does good, and he's, you know, doing amazing on JV, and next year, he's going to be, you know, someone to reckon with at 6'5", so I'm excited, excited for the growth and everything to come for my family and for the council and city. So I just want to say, side note from all that, thank you to our veterans and for your service, I really appreciate it. I know I don't take my freedom for granted, so thank you very much. Also, I live here close in town, near the Chevron, and I don't know if it's because people think there's some streetlights, but I'm seeing a lot of folks walking dogs and just walking, in all very dark clothes. I've, many times, and when you're driving, and I don't know if they think, because there's a little bit of side lights, that they are safe, please, 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 people, wear reflectors, get some bright, get a bright colors, because when you're driving at night, it's so hard to see you folks, and I see a lot of them, and I roll my window down, and I make a nice comment, I cannot see you, you almost were hit, so it's like, you can't just, yeah, walk out in the middle and wear that, so just please protect yourselves, your families, and keeping everybody safe, so thank you, that's all I have.
Phil, can you write her a ticket?
No, I didn't mean they almost got it, but like, you know, they are just, you know, walking in the middle of the street, and it's, you know, you see them last second, and that's the scariest part, you know, bikes.
It is.
It's the scariest part, because it's the last second, you're like, you came out of nowhere, and look at what you're wearing, there's nothing, yeah, so it's just, it's surprising how many times I see it.
Thank you. Councilmember Casper.
Thanks. Well, everybody can slow down a little bit, make it a little bit easier, so...
Oh, I'm going slow, that's not the problem.
Um, I was trying to decide what I wanted to talk about tonight, and I couldn't, so I'm just going to make it up here as I go. Thanks for everybody that's coming, as Boo said before, I appreciate all of the veterans that are here and have showed up. I'm very sad to see Janine go, I thought she was very good for our city. And then, along those same lines, I was kind of thinking about some of the public comments from earlier, and this was not the reason that Janine went to Ridgefield, but we, as a city, cannot afford our own full-time attorney. And, you know, the Budget Committee, I think we're going to talk a little bit earlier, but the Budget Committee did work really hard this year at looking at what the costs were, and the more we are familiar with this, we, I mean, the council members that have been elected over the last four years, the more we look at the budget, the more we see what has and has not been taken care of in the previous years. So I look forward to the public comment tonight to hear what people think about, about the revenue sources, but at the same time, there's a lot that has fallen behind, and I'm confident that there are not things in that budget that you will see that could be cut. I don't believe so. So I think it's a good question, and it's a very good concern, but, you know, from my perspective, just in this seat right here, maybe other councilors feel different, but I think we did the best we could to get that down to the penny. So, anyway, but, other than that, it's a great time to be in La Center, the weather's changing, and it's getting dark earlier, but the football team's doing great, the volleyball team went a long ways, they did get beat, but you know what? They did really well all season, so that's pretty exciting. I think we have a great December coming up, and I think we're lucky to have the staff that we have, and so, I like being here, thanks.
Way to wing it. I love it. Good job. Councilmember Boyle.
Good evening, everyone. I really don't have a whole lot tonight, I will follow up about C-Train, it's my favorite topic these days, but, yeah, great to see everybody. Casey pretty much covered everything else that I can think of. It's hard to follow him up sometimes, but anyways, yeah, great to see everybody, and we'll get you on the next one.
Thank you. Councilmember LaHa.
Good evening, and so good to see all of you here. And I particularly wanted to remember the veterans, so I wore my black shirts, and I had a dad in the Army Air Corps during World War II, and lots and lots of friends that fought in Vietnam. I went to a wonderful veterans event last Thursday night at the Battleground Community Center, and I was really blessed this last week on, that Teresa's Little School put on an amazing event for the veterans, and it was, it was just darling, the kids got up and sang, and they pledged the flag, and it was really, really, really special, so I encourage people next year, if you have a chance, to see that, because I had never met Teresa before, and her heart for the kids, I mean, she almost would start crying every time she'd talk about the kids or veterans, so it was very, very special. And the last thing, did you know that today is the last day they printed pennies?
Oh, was that today?
Yeah, that was today. Printed, or what do you say? Created them? Yeah. So I thought that was just an interesting little tidbit there, so, anyway, yes, I agree with, I was also on the Budget Committee, and we went through that with a fine-toothed comb, and I don't see that we spend anything extra at all, we really have a tight budget, so, anyway, thank you for attending tonight.
Thank you. Councilmember Servini.
Thank you. Just like to thank everyone for coming once again, and...
I was trying to decide what I wanted to talk about tonight, and I couldn't. So I'm just going to make it up here as I go. Thanks for everybody that's coming. As Bo said before, I appreciate all of the veterans that are here and have showed up. I'm very sad to see Janine go. I thought she was very good for our city. And then along those same lines, I was kind of thinking about some of the public comments from earlier. And this was not the reason that Janine went to Richfield. But we as a city cannot afford our own full-time attorney. And, you know, the budget committee, I think we're going to talk a little bit earlier. But the budget committee did work really hard this year at looking at what the costs were. And the more we are familiar with this, we, I mean, the council members that have been elected over the last four years. The more we look at the budget, the more we see what has and has not been taken care of in the previous years. So I look forward to the public comment tonight to hear what people think about, about the revenue sources. But at the same time, there's a lot that has fallen behind. And I'm confident that there are not things in that budget that you will see that could be cut. I don't believe so. So I think it's a good question and it's a very good concern. But, you know, from, from my perspective, just in this seat right here, maybe other counselors feel different. But I, I think we did the best we could to get that down to the penny. So anyway. But other than that, it's a great time to be in La Center. The weather's changing and it's getting dark earlier, but football team's doing great. The volleyball team went a long ways. They did get beat, but you know what? They did really well all season, so that's pretty exciting. I think we have a great December coming up. And I think we're lucky to have the staff that we have. And so I like being here. Thanks.
Way to wing it. I love it. Good job. Councilmember Boyle.
Good evening, everyone. I really don't have a whole lot tonight. I will follow up about CTRAM. It's my favorite topic these days. But, um, yeah, great to see everybody. Casey pretty much covered everything else that I can think of. It's hard to follow him up sometimes, but anyways. Yeah, great to see everybody and we'll get you on the next one.
Thank you. Councilmember Leah.
Good evening, and so good to see all of you here. And I particularly wanted to remember the veterans, so I wore my black shirts. And I had a dad in the Army Air Corps during World War II and lots and lots of friends that fought in Vietnam. I went to a wonderful veterans event last Thursday night at the battleground community center. And I was really blessed this last week on that Teresa's Little School put on an amazing event for the veterans. And it was, it was just darling. The kids got up and sang and they pledged the flag and it was really, really, really special. So I encourage people next year, if you have a chance to, to see that. Because I, I had never met Teresa before and her heart for the kids, I mean, she almost would start crying every time she'd talk about the kids or veterans. So it was very, very special. And the last thing, did you know that today is the last day they printed pennies?
Oh, was that today?
Yeah, that was today. Printed or what do you say? Created them? Yeah. So I thought that was just an interesting little tidbit there. So anyway, yes, I agree with, I was also on the budget committee and we went through that with a fine-tooth comb. And I don't see that we spend anything extra at all. We really have a tight budget. So anyway, thank you for attending tonight.
Thank you. Councilmember Serpene.
Thank you. Just like to thank everyone for coming once again and spending time with us and giving your input throughout the evening. It's not always the most exciting thing to spend your Wednesdays at, but we appreciate your attendance. And I think that's, you know, I would express my heartfelt thanks to all of the veterans and all of the years of service. I too have years and years and generations of family members that served in various capacities and some are continuing to serve. So I, I understand the freedom that we have and never take that for granted. And extend my heartfelt appreciation for your valor and your fierceness and your dedication to our country that we all love. So thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, next up, we have staff reports. Community Development and Public Works Staff Report, Ms. Tracy Coleman will be presenting. Tracy, floor is yours.
Thank you, mayor. I'd like to thank the veterans that are here tonight and one that sits next to me. Thank you very much. And I am very appreciative of what we've been given here in the United States to live here. So thank you for that. First and foremost, I want to talk about the crosswalks that are here in the city. And as you know, we go through and we renew some that are faded throughout the year. Want to make sure that you're aware that when it does rain and when we have a light frost out, so on and so forth, that we have new crosswalking markings, that those are slicker than the regular road. So you want to be extremely careful when you're walking across those if they're brand new. They are slick. They aren't worn down like the regular asphalt. So just be aware when you're walking to probably stay closer to the black mark versus the white mark because they can become very slick. So be, be aware of that. Also want to state that our planning commission meeting from Monday night that we had, because we were closed on Tuesday, we normally have it on Tuesdays, has been extended to Thursday. And so want to make everybody aware of that. If they want to join us tomorrow night, it's at 5:30. It's been extended because we didn't have a quorum for the final vote. So that'll continue on tomorrow night at 5:30 here at council chambers. In regards to our public works operations, we have installed a new Wi-Fi access point and business class cable modem at the community center. So hopefully we'll have some better connection with the Wi-Fi system at the community center. And as we approach the winter, our public works department is preparing our equipment for the inclement weather. Two of our trucks will be outfitted with a plow, sander, and liquid anti-ice application. And we have actually been installing a third plow on a, a third plow on one of our trucks as well. We are waiting to hear back for the TIB grants that we submitted in August for the road maintenance project, which is crack seal and pothole repair, the Northwest La Center Road Improvements, and also the Aspen and 10th Street overlay. We hope to hear in December if we've received any of those grant funding. So I hope to have a good report next month or at least a report stating that yea or nay. So let's hope for the best on that one. In regards to our parks ground, we have a write-up that's coming out in our city newsletter about the pickleball courts. But just kind of a heads up on that, that they're kind of on hold at this point due to the weather. We have the asphalt's been laid and the grading, so on and so forth. But we're right now working on the irrigation lines and the plantings that'll go around that court. And then we'll complete those before school gets out next year, which will include leveling off the courts, the acrylic paint, the nets, the fencing, so on and so forth, and the permanent pickleball nets.
Can I ask a question about that real quick? Is it safe for kids to just play on it right now?
Oh, it's just asphalt. It's just like a basketball court.
They're allowed to be up there. It's not a.
Yep, no problem at all whatsoever.
She lined it with electricity and.
There's, there's a little bit of ponding, so it might be more fun to play.
Like kind of an open construction site, sort of, and it just wasn't good for them.
Nope, they can play up there. We encourage them to play on there, ride their skateboard, whatever they want to do on there. They're fine with that. Leaf season, as we know, is in full swing. And so we are working diligently to clean up the leaves in our parks and around our facilities. Please, we ask that nobody blows leaves into the roads. It clogs our drains. We encourage citizens to clear off any catch basins that are out in front of their residence. And just so you're aware, we've cleaned approximately 300 catch basins this year. And so we want to make sure that by removing the accumulated sediment in these catch basins, that they aren't covered with leaves. So we can continue to let our roads drain, especially when it gets frosty and cooler temperatures where we can have freezing. We don't want any ponding going on where we have some slick road conditions. So please, if you see a catch basin with leaves on it, it's in front of your house, kick the leaves off to the side, kick them up on the curb, or pick them up and put them in a bag and throw them away. There is, in regards to the water, the wastewater plant, all the plant parameters still remained within compliance of NPDES permit limits. We had Department of Representatives, Department of Ecology Representatives perform an audit and compliance inspection at our plant. And there were no discrepancies found. So the guys did an absolutely outstanding job and I'm very proud of them. The flight pumps that we sent off to have rebuilt have been evaluated. And one of the pumps, after 22 years of service, had to be rebuilt. And then we're awaiting the rebuilding of two additional pumps. And then a third lift station, too, was repaired and put that, that pump was put back into inventory. The surface aerator motor, motor failed. And so we actually, that was had been in service for 22 years. So we had a backup surface mixer that we used. And we are coordinating with our public work staff, the wastewater treatment plant and the public work staff, to further evaluate and repair that in full and get that sent off. All the accounts have been evaluated between Clark PUD and our system for accuracy. And we expect to present the final findings in December 10th council meeting or the January 7th council meeting. We plan on doing a presentation in regards to the rate study at that time. In regards to engineering, the poles for the Fourth Street project are in, being powder coated right now. And we still anticipate that project to be completed in early of 2026, probably by March. The fourth.
You're talking about the light poles, correct?
Yes, the, the signalization at Fourth Street itself. Yes. And then the Fourth Street Widening and Breezy Creek Culvert Project. We have the bid, the bid is out right now. We have a request for bids out right now for that project. And so we've extended that bid date until December 10th because we've asked, contractors have asked, this is a large project. It's $15 million project, asked us to extend the bid timeline with the holidays. So we've extended it to December 12th and we'll be awarding that in the January 7th meeting. The shared use path, which is the one off Pacific Highway, we're working with our consultant agreement and WashDOT to work out the fees that are associated with that. And that hasn't come to fruition yet with WashDOT. So we're still working on that. Hope to have that done by month end. The, let's see, what else do I have here? Oh, the WashDOT Safety Grant. So that one, the local agency agreement and project prospectus has been sent to WashDOT. We expect to hear from them in two weeks. So we could put this out to bid in December to have an award in January, finally, after two years. In regards to the building department, Stevens Hillside has 10 homes under construction. Lockwood Meadows has 14 and Urban Meadows has 15. There's 18 code enforcement cases that are open and the last one, the longest one being of August of 2023. It was closed and then reopened, just so you know. In regards to our community development activity, we have 74 total new residential applications. We have zero multifamily residential applications for the year. We have 124 other, which is roof right-of-way, mechanical, plumbing, et cetera. 13 special permits, which includes solar panels, cell towers, decks, covered patios, fencing, so on and so forth. And then we have a total of 50 land use submittals. That's all.
That's it? You sure?
That's it. That's, that's, that's about a third of it.
Pretty busy. Pretty busy. Thank you, Tracy. Council, do you have any questions, comments, conversations for Tracy?
I have a quick, just a quick question. What, um, you know, there's two things that have failed and had to be rebuilt that were 22 years old. Is that a, a normal practice is to wait until things completely fail to replace them? Or is there a life cycle? Is there, what is the life cycle of those things? When should they have been fixed if that's not the case?
So what you want to do is you always have a backup pump. So if we're talking about a pump or a blower, so on and so forth, you always want to have a backup on the shelf. For instance, the dryer itself, when we have a failed component on the dryer, that isn't something you would have backed up on the shelf. But all of your pumps, your flight pumps, your blowers, all that, they always, we always have backups. So you want to run them because there, there's not only a backup in the field that can be operational and turned on if one kicks off. Let's say you have three pumps in a row. If one fails, you kick the, the next one on and then you work on replacing one where you have another, a third pump that is a backup. So it is standard to go ahead and wait till one of them fail, but you always want to have a replacement part on the shelf. For certain things, your pumps and your blowers. But when it comes to a dryer, you really don't have a dryer unit sitting on the shelf because it's a big gas dryer. So for that, that, that is typical.
Okay, thank you.
No, it's a good question. I asked the same thing.
Are all the sidewalks updated and painted? I've seen some and they look great, but I was just curious if they've all been done.
The crosswalks are not 100% complete throughout the city. We have a schedule where we try to do a third each year. They didn't have that before. So when I first came in last year, I, we went through and we tried to get a bulk of them. And then this year, we tried to add a third more. So they're on a, a three-year cycle. They should last for the most part for every three years. But some of the higher traffic areas, they don't. So we try to update those every year as we see wear and tear.
And just know when Tracy was talking about the paint, you know, that, that's been put down or the torch down.
Torch down.
Either one of them, about being slick. We are following all the Washington State, what's the?
MUTCD standards and ADA compliance.
But they are still slick, right? It's the irony, hey, stay on the sidewalk, but you might slip, fall, break a hip. I mean, it's, it's so bizarre to me. But regardless, I just wanted to make sure that was out there, that we are following the standards that the state mandates for it.
Hopefully, yeah, they can't come after the city for legal action. I mean.
Actually, rear-ended somebody on a turn signal. Tried to stop like with the torch down or whatever. And it was just, it was raining and it was brand new and it's slick. And I hit my brakes and I just slid right into the car in front of me and I moved.
Wow.
Sometimes worn sidewalk, sidewalk crossings are a little better sometimes.
Any other questions for Tracy? All right. Thank you, Tracy. Great report. Appreciate it. All right, next up, we have the ordinance 2025-13, row vacation of Fourth and H Street. And Mr. Bryant will be presenting. Brian, who just had the trip of a lifetime home, is with us. Two, three days later. Brian, are you with us?
I am here. Can you hear me all right?
Yeah.
Excellent. All right, well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, council. Tonight, we have the public hearing and ordinance to consider vacation of a part of Fourth Street and H Avenue. So just as a quick reminder from the last meeting, we have received a petition from Jason Property Owner to vacate approximately 0.3 acres of right-of-way that is part of Fourth Street and H Avenue. This right-of-way came to the city in 1875 during the, or as a part of the Timmins and Breezy Homestead claim. But it's still undeveloped to this day because it is very steep slopes through the right-of-way between 15 and 80% slopes. So chapter 35.79 of the RCW governs the right-of-way vacation process. Council, at our last meeting, passed Resolution 486 to initiate the vacation process and set tonight's public hearing to consider the vacation of this right-of-way. Tonight's public hearing was scheduled between the required 20 and 60 days from the passage of that resolution. And notice was posted both at the site and, and two other spots in the city, as well as in the newspaper of record to notify residents of tonight's public hearing. If you recall from previous right-of-way vacations, state law does give the city council an option to require the renting property owners compensate the city for the value of the right-of-way. However, in this case, there's not a lot of value to that right-of-way due to those steep slopes. And further, when, if and when development happens in this area, the property owner will have to dedicate and construct roadways that serve the property. They probably won't be in this grid system like the, the Timmins and Breezy Homestead laid out. But again, due to the steep slopes, that's not really feasible. So at this point, happened to, I'm happy to answer any questions. And we recommend that the council hold a public hearing and then consider ordinance 2025-13 to vacate this right-of-way. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you, Brian. Council, any questions for Brian? Pretty straightforward. Just a couple. If so, can I get a motion?
Well, we'll do the public hearing first, please.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Sorry, Brian. I'm reading down on here. Okay, so at 7:16 PM, I would like to open up to public comment. Any of you would like to place any comments on this ordinance? Please step up to the mic, state your name and address for the record. Thank you, ma'am. Are we getting feedback, clerk? Is that what it is? Interesting. Any others would like to step up and comment? How about anybody calling in? Please press star six and state your name and address for the record.
Hi, God evening again. Kimberly Goheen Alvin. Yeah, it was very difficult to hear Al, a little bit echoey and stuff. So maybe there is something wrong. I don't know that that microphone was working at all, just to make a note. So I'm against all growth in La Center. In fact, I've trying, I'm trying to get a ordinance, ordinance change with a group of people from Clark County to have a no-growth overlay over all of Clark County for five years. So that we can settle in with the new people that have come in and get to know our neighbors, right? We do not need any more growth here. I, I realize that this council is actually a corporation and corporations have one thing in mind, and that is to make money. Hence, all the taxation and the property taxes and all this going up, up, up. We're actually driving people into homelessness and that's a fact. I'm against all growth, again, I'll say. And I think it's not fair to the people that are selling their properties to think that they can sell it, such as Timmins Landing, we'll say, and have millions and millions of dollars invested, but not have a, have any growth. And so they need to be advised. I, I want this under advisement. We need to talk about this more with more people there about the growth in La Center. We want to keep a small-town feel. We do not want to be a city. We want a small-town feel. I know other little towns are fighting for the same thing. And it can be done. Why? How do I know that? Because we, the people, have that choice. If we do not assemble, the government will carry on making their monies. And that's why our forefathers warned us to assemble and to talk it out and to tell our council what we want, not what they want or one or two special interests. I, I get selling property and development and stuff, but not here in La Center. We need to stop it. It's, there's too much already. I mean, when you drive down Fourth Street here, it's just our, it's a highway. And we've, we've got to stop. We're talking about pollution. You talk about the, the water drainage and stuff and, and mentions oil and gas all over the place. Yeah, and it's, it's killing our earth. And that's the main topic right there. We have hurt the earth so badly. We need to develop better resources in our sewer system to clean the water. It's not clean, what they're putting down at the Lewis River. It's not clean at all. In fact, it's toxic. And, but out of sight, out of mind, right? But there's those of us that have a duty to inform the public of, as to what's going on. I'm asking you to assemble, to tell people, stop selling your properties. We need to have a no-growth here in La Center for at least five years. So we can get to know the people that are here and maybe help stop the crazy drivers that are around here and all that. So it's a huge impact and it does affect everybody here. The impact of overgrowth, population pollution is, is a mental health issue to many of us. I'll tell you that right now. Thank you and God is always good. Amen.
Thank you, Kimberly. Any other callers calling in? Please press star six to unmute yourself. State your name and address for the record. Clerk, do we have any comments to be read?
No comments to be read.
Perfect. I'm still here. I'm still hearing. I guess we can do this right now, right? Okay, the time is 7:20. I'd like to close the public comments and turn this back over to counsel. Counsel, do you have any questions, the comments, conversations for Brian or amongst each other?
How much money do we usually spend just to vacate a little piece like this? I mean, all this work and paperwork, we get no money for it. It costs us money.
It's a great question. Um, yeah, it does cost some money. But what would you estimate that at? We've done quite a few of these, like this one here. What would be Brian's time on it?
I would estimate maybe $500 or so of staff time would went into this process. We've done quite a few of it at this point. So we have you know, a pretty good process in place, so that I would estimate roughly $500.
So is there ever a time, I don't think we've seen one where the the vacating property is not completely undevelopable or worthless and you get some money for it?
Yeah, I believe we did one last year where we did require compensation from, I think it was.
Management. It's 14 grand.
Yeah, I thought. Sorry, that piece up there. Yeah, that makes more sense because that's, you know, but I just meet down here in city limits.
Right.
Yeah, we've never. So they're all been obviously classified as complete because I'm guessing obviously the city would take money if they could get money. Like, why would you buy? Why would you be like, you're gonna spend $500, spend a thousand and make a couple thousand?
Yeah, I mean, it kind of depends. There's this, the RCW actually has, depending on how long the right-of-way has been right-of-way, there's different rules that apply as far as the compensation. Think if it's it's a shorter duration of time, you can only request, you can request a lower amount. And then it also obviously depends on the situation of the particular right-of-way that's being vacated.
I'm sure there's a ton of layers to it, but.
Well, I mean, maybe, I don't know, just assume that there's a certain amount of liability and maintenance that we're, you know, relieving ourselves from that could potentially bring a cost to the city that is, you know, far greater than hanging on to it. That makes sense.
Probably costs more than $500 to weed it along the edge of it.
Yeah.
Is that all we have to do to that particular piece of property?
Yeah, it's it's pretty heavily vegetated and steep. So, you know, I would guess that there's minimal right-of-way maintenance sort of along the, you know, maybe the top corners of it where the butts develop streets. But then, you know, it's sort of a triangle or L shape that really kind of goes down a hill. So a lot of it is is really just, you know, overgrown just looks like the surrounding hillside, I would say.
Any other questions? Comments? Yeah, that's what I thought, too. If not, I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I suggest that the city council consider passing ordinance 225-13 to vacate a portion of the right-of-way of the Fourth Street and H Avenue.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Clerk, can I get a roll call vote on this, please?
Councilmember Fox?
Yes.
Councilmember Casper?
Yes.
Councilmember Boyle?
Yes.
Councilmember Leah?
Yes.
Councilmember Serbini?
Substain.
Thank you, counsel. Thank you, clerk. Ordinance 2025-13 passes. Hey, thank you, Brian. Appreciate it. I know that you put a little bit of time into that, so. And thank you for knowing that you're four hours ahead of us and it's 11:30 at night.
Yeah, I'm gonna sign off. Thank you, counsel.
Thank you again. All right. Next up, we have another hearing here, Public Hearing 2026 Preliminary Budget. Mr. Peter Boyce will be presenting, and I think Riley is as well, right? Or no, Riley, you're not.
He's my backup.
He's the backup this time. Okay.
Yeah, I'm still getting acquainted with the city finances and the budget. But Riley is our resident expert at this point. So. So as counsel knows, you received a review of the preliminary budget at a previous meeting, so I don't want to duplicate all of that discussion that Riley took you through. What I do want to hit on is we've updated some of the numbers at this point. So the budget you have in front of you now has been slightly amended. So I'd like to start on, let's see, it's page two, General Fund Tax Revenue Analysis. I'm going to save the property tax discussion until the revenue to public hearing. So we'll go through that in more depth then. But right now, we've reduced the property tax amount by $1,000. We received some information from the county. We had previously had it at five, 805,000 total, and we've reduced that to 804. A lot of these are small changes, but I I want you to know what's in, what's what's been changed since the last document. Utility excise tax increased by about $100 to 423,600. The retail sales criminal justice taxes, we increased the estimate revenue by $700. The retail sales public safety taxes, that was up by $400. The rental excise tax, or I'm sorry, retail sales hotel was increased by $300. The rental excise tax has gone up by 3,280, and that is mostly due to the fact that we're leasing our bank building out that the city owns. And that will be the tax paid on it throughout the year. So that's all for that page. The other estimates were changed looking at historical or the actual revenues that were coming in in 2025. That's part of the calculation when we look at 2026. The second page, General Fund Other Revenue Analysis. The state shared and other intergovernmental revenues slight increase by $725. Interest and dividends, we increased that. The estimate now is $11,300 more, so a total of 140,000 for next year. Rental income, again, this is changed because of the bank building lease. So we show an increase of $25,543, bringing the total budget next year to 46,677. Overall, for the general fund, we're looking at increased revenues by 41,348 when you total those all up. Right, the next page. We're looking at general fund expenses in the finance department. Overall, we have a net decrease in full-time employees by 0.5. So you'll notice a reduction in salaries and benefits. Part of that is we eliminated the strategic specialist position. We did add this year a halftime payroll clerk position, so we didn't get quite a full reduction there. Also, it should be noted when Alex left us, we reduced the allocation for 2026. He was at a higher step on the salary grid. We dropped it from an eight to a three. So you'll see those savings there.
So real quick, you're, sorry, just so you guys understand, we actually did cut out some of those positions, combined some jobs. And if you notice, there's been some strategic moves for personnel in the offices when you come in. And that is us tightening the belt and condensing the jobs because we were seeing some extra time there. And we thought, well, we can add a few other duties to these people's plate, not overloading them. And then eliminate some of the the money that was going out, expenses there.
Right, so.
Hopefully, you heard that, Dennis.
So more particularly, the documents duties are going to go to the halftime payroll clerk. A lot of the policy and ordinance development will go to me. And actually Hannah has moved out to the front desk, so she's doing her old duties and taking care of some front desk duties. So a lot going on there. Moving on, got a big jump here. Let's see, to impact fees fund, did I miss? Wait, I missed something here. Okay, so the reserve fund. Interest and dividends, we overestimated what we thought we'd bring in. So we've dropped it by $25,500. So the total interest and dividends expected in '26 are now at 155,000. The next page, impact fees. So again, interest and revenue or interest and dividends, we reduce that by $59,325. So the estimated expense or revenue in that case is 85,000 for the year. The next page, capital projects fund.
Actually, Peter, do you have any more information on that for the council than the citizens or residents of why that dropped 145,000? See, interest and dividends.
Gotcha. So we were looking, I I kind of redid my estimates for pretty much all of the interest. So the dividends are pretty fixed. We know what bonds we own. We know how much we're going to get from them. We know when we're going to get them. One of the issues that we're going to be looking at next year, particularly in the sewer capital, is we're going to be spending pretty much all that money. And with the Rosen Streets Fund, we're spending significantly more money that's currently in there. We're going to be getting money back into it, right? It's all going to work out. But based on the timing between when we spend money, when we get money in, we might have to, all right, currently this bond is owned by this fund. We might need to, hey, we need to buy this today, sell that bond to this other fund that fund will buy, you know, also pay for the accumulated interest on those. And just kind of assuming that we're going to have lower cash reserves. Because you know, a lot of these ones says, oh, hey, we've got X amount in our fund balance. Let's calculate interest on whatever, $3 million in the fund balance. But you know, if you're going to be constantly at close to zero because you're spending all this money and waiting to get it back in, that's just going to reduce what kind of interest you could earn on your on your reserves.
That's a great, great explanation. Does that make sense to counsel? Because there's a lot of money going out for the projects that are going, and then the grass bringing back in, and you're just not collecting any money at that time. Thank you, Riley. Appreciate it.
All right. Thank you, Riley. So the Capital Projects Fund, the real estate excise tax, we're increasing that revenue by about 15,000 to 575,000 for the year. All right, moving up to the Sewer Operations Fund. Sewer fees, we looked at what was coming in in 2025. Our estimate has changed to increase by 35,000. So estimated sewer fees coming in would be 1,645,000. The transfer out to the Sewer Capital Fund, we also increased by $40,000, so it's up to 880,000 going out at this point. Right. Moving on to the Sewer Capital Fund, we'll spend a little bit more time here. Again, you see the transfer in from the Sewer Operating Fund. That's a mirror of what you just saw, up $40,000 to the 880,000. Engineering for sewer and maintenance projects, that increased by 200,000 to 950,000. I might have to rely on Tracy O'Reilly for an explanation on on that one.
We knew a fixed amount that we were going to be spending on this, and you might see this with a lot of these other projects as well. Some of these things take either more than a year or just the times it takes to do that project might be from, you know, August to February. So we have to make our best guess at how much we're going to spend this year versus how much we're going to spend next year. And so I think that was at $950,000 total or a million dollars total. And our first estimate was that we were going to spend 250,000 of that this year, remainder next year. And we're, we didn't update all of our projections in the 2025 projection column, but this was a fund that we took a closer look at. And it just, we were going to spend 250,000 of that this year, so the rest of it's going to happen next year.
I'd like to add on to that. So the majority of when I report on these projects, the Fourth Street project, the pedestrian path, the Signal Project, so on and so forth, when I talk about they are right now under washout review, we don't have the the funds allocated yet, so on and so forth, that delays our projects. So when we first project how much we're going to spend, we're going to, with the assumption that we're going to be able to have funds allocated and start a project at a certain time during the year. When those funds don't get allocated, and it brings us into the next year, that throws off this spending pattern of what we think we're going to spend on contractors and how much we think we're going to get back once the funds are allocated, and we can start submitting these contractor payments for reimbursement. So that's kind of where we're sitting right now with quite a few of the road projects is the money hasn't been allocated or just got allocated. In the meantime, we're spending engineering fees, so on and so forth, and we haven't been able to start submitting for reimbursement yet. So we'll see a lot more of that next year.
Okay, and that brings us to the next item, Screw Press and Building. If you remember, the last time you saw this budget, it had a negative fund balance. And we really can't adopt a budget with a negative fund balance of that nature. I believe it was about 1.4 million, right, right around there, 1.3 and some change. We did a reduction in this line item by 1.5 million to bring it down to 3.5 million. The the caveat with this reduction is the projects still need to happen. What we're waiting on really is the rate study to become clear. So we'll be looking at this project that was cut along with the other projects that are included. But city council will have to give some serious consideration to what to fund, where to place the rates. But in, as of right now, we're reducing it, so we have a positive fund balance of 218,000. I believe the reduction was 1.5 million, which equaled the building that would house the screw press. So with that said, you can expect after the rate study is done, we'll have to have some discussions about whether or not to come back and amend the budget to include projects if city council deems it so. But it it really is contingent on the rate study. So we'll be having lots of conversations about the rate study, how it affects the community, how it affects operations, how it affects long-term capital needs of the sewer plant. And it will be an ongoing discussion. I also wanted to mention, you know, we talked about the outstanding debt that the sewer fund has, and we talked about not paying the $400,000 to the general fund or debt service, the sewer fund, that money from the general fund. And the reason being is when we're looking at this rate study, we have some immediate projects that need to be completed. And we're trying to find every way possible to minimize rate increases that could happen. And by eliminating that $400,000 temporarily from the budget to pay off that debt, that will help alleviate some of the pressure on the rates. And that's the reason that is happening. It's intentional. We're also planning how to long-term, look at a long-term plan to deal with that debt that's out there. Because, you know, you can't just keep kicking the can down the road. At some point, you need a plan to pay that debt. So that is coming. And so there's going to be a lot of So that is coming. And so there's going to be a lot of intense future discussions with council and the community to talk about how, how this looks going into the future.
Right.
Peter, could I ask? When was the rate studies actually started and what was anticipated that it should be finished by?
That would be a question for Tracy at this point, yeah.
Oh. The rate study was approved to move forward at, at last year's budget. And we started that probably in March of this year and working with, it's anticipated to be completed and presented to council on December 10th or January 7th. And so we've been working on it for about nine months. It's in coordination with the general sewer plan. Because to do the rate study, you have to know what type of capital infrastructure that you're going to have to build and what you have in the ground. You also have to work with the Department of Ecology, which we are doing. You also have to work with the Clark County PUD. Because we're talking about the water rates, remembering what the water, water flow is based on what the sewage could potentially be if you guys want to go that route. So there's a long process that's been involved for that. So it's been going on for about nine months now. So.
It's been extremely time consuming. I can tell you that. And my time hasn't even been taken up as much as theirs has. And I've spent a lot of time at this. I do have to tell you that the, when the rate study comes in, you're going to be presented with a few options. And you'll have to make a decision of which way you guys want us to proceed. And these numbers will change, right? Depending on how you guys want to proceed. But these are things that we have to have done. The sewer plant has had, or the wastewater plant, I should say, has had some neglect over some time period. And it can no longer be neglected. And this rate study also has to pay for the future, right? So we have to look at that, the rates to cover the future construction costs. So when you see that $6 million sitting down there, this is, that's not the end of it. That is not the end of it. So you'll see a five-year plan and a seven or eight-year plan. And then you'll also see in the long term, from what I've seen on my own just two days ago, you'll see where the plan is to actually start seeing some of the payments come back into the city for the actual debt, not just covering the interest, right? So keep that in mind. There is some big stuff coming. That's very important to the city and to the residents. And we will be incorporating everyone in these decisions. This isn't just going to be us up here making the decision. We're going to encourage lots of public participation, lots of public outreach. And then talking with your counselors to let them know what your guys' thoughts are as well. This is going to take a town decision.
And my understanding, and this has been years.
Yes.
Years and years.
Yes. But I did want it noted that, you know, and I asked Peter to make sure that, that it was noted that the $400,000. The city has the $400,000. So we actually made money. Our estimation is to make money again of approximately, or estimated about $700,000, just like we did last year. Right? So we're, we're on track for that. We didn't go under. We didn't overspend. In fact, we've cost, cut some costs. And we've shuffled people around. We're looking at ways of saving money in, in the wastewater plan. I, for three months, I've been on the attack to find a different approach and different methods that we can do this in to save taxpayers' dollars. I don't want to spend any more money than anybody else does, right? I wouldn't do it in my own household. I'm not going to do it sitting here in front of you guys. But these are things that are going to come at us. And we're going to have to make these decisions as, as, as a whole, as a whole city. So we're not hiding anything. We're going to ask you guys, come on up and meet us at a open house. Wasn't that what we decided on? Was that open house, Tracy? I thought it, staff meeting?
After we presented at the council meeting, we were going to put a survey monkey out on our website. And we are also going to include a flyer in with the billing. So people could know where they could go and give their comment and feedback. So we could, we could produce that back to council. They can help make their decision on what route they would like to go based on citizen feedback and comment.
All I can say is you're going to hear Al come up to you during that time period and tell, tell you all he was right. I could tell you that right now. Because Al was right. So with that being said, I didn't mean to take over your presentation, Peter. I just, I wanted to elaborate a little bit further into that discussion. So that council understood. Please continue.
Sure. You bet. It's an important discussion. We need everyone to be aware of it. The next page, sewer fund debt service, a couple of small changes. We increased the interest and dividends up by $8,600 to $150,000. Real small bank fees adjustment, we decre- decreased that down to 100, by $150 now. Bank fees are estimated at $100. So very small changes there. And one last item, so Stormwater Utility Fund, Stormwater Fees. We did another estimate of what we're projected to bring in this year that helps educate us for 2026. So we're looking at $2,000 more, so 304,000 total. So that, those are the changes that were made since the last time you saw the preliminary budget. We're hoping to actually adopt the final budget at the next meeting, next Wednesday. So we, we do have a pretty lengthy agenda for December 2nd. And we're required to have the final budget adopted prior to the end of the calendar year. So expect to see an ordinance on the next meeting to adopt the final budget. And I wanted to also thank the Budget Committee, staff members, especially Riley, for all the hard work they've put into this. You know, the project's always better with the more eyes you can put on it. So thanks to everyone who participated.
Yeah. Thank you, Peter. Appreciate it. Counsel, do you have any questions or any conversations there with Peter? All right. Okay. Let's see here, 7:47. I'd like to open up the preliminary budget hearing to the audience. If you have any public comments, please step up to the podium, state your name and address for the record.
Al Phillips, R16, Northwest Kennedy Brook Road. Yeah, I was right. You know, you don't raise the rates for the sewer plant for, I don't, X amount of years now. And you think people are angry now, you wait till you tell them how much it's going to increase. Great, we're going to be able to fill this place up. I love it. Also, you know, I used to talk about, gee whiz, we just got rid of the attorney and we hired a new one. Well, we're going to pay the old attorney to transition the new attorney in. What? I've changed jobs a lot of times. And boy, would I have liked to, you know, have somebody transition me in and out of jobs. But it just didn't happen. You know, Brian Cass is another prime example. You know, he was, you gave him an extension to transition Tracy in. Well, gee whiz, he's still here. You know, hopefully it sounds like he's staying pretty busy. But, you know, have you looked hard? Maybe you gotta look just a little harder. But this is all for now. Thank you. God bless America.
Thank you, Al. Any other public comments from the audience? Please step up, state your name and address for the record.
Dennis Hill, 1316 West Alder Place, Les Center. I appreciate the comments of Mayor Tom regarding finding the right fit for individuals within our city. I think it's a great thing. Cross-training and all those kinds of things are, I think, are important. Because we've hired some wonderful people in this city. And I know that. And I'm appreciative of the fact that we have a great staff here in the city. And they help make this city run as efficiently as it does. But one of the things that, and I get, just kind of piggyback on what Al has said here. My comment again here is the fact that we've got this young lady over here, Tracy. She's the Director of Public Works, et cetera, et cetera. Very smart young lady. I know her as well as I maybe like to, but I'm, I've been impressed by who she is, her knowledge and everything else. I'm still struggling with the fact that I have a hard time believing that she cannot do what Brian Cass did this evening. I like Brian. But why are we paying more money for someone to do what I know that she can do as well or better than Brian can? And, and I just struggle with those kinds of things. I'm not, I'm not sure if there's, I'm not sure what to call it. I'm not going to use the word. But I just don't think it's right. We need to be looking in our staff and saying, what can they do that they're not doing today? Not necessarily doing someone else's job, but are there some tasks or some skill that they have with them? We have got, we got a new, Peter's a new employee. He brings a lot of, a lot of skill with him. He's probably not being tasked as much as he can. He probably has some things that he would like to do and could do on behalf of the city that broaden his responsibility as a Director of Administrative Services. But anyways, I think the city needs to continue to look at ways that we can utilize people. The other part of, I want to be sure that we have, I want to see again, something presented by the council that says, here is what each of the department heads in our city have done as we look forward to 2026. It says, here are the cuts that we've made, here's the changes we've made within our, our department to save money as we move into 2026. I'd like to see that two or three-page list of things. And there's a dollar amount that says, here's what we did. And if we can't come up with that, then I think we need some new leadership. Because I'll guarantee you, when I was working full-time with Boeing, that was, that was a given every year. You, you better come up with ways that we can reduce costs. Doesn't mean costs don't go up, but we need to be able to show that we in fact can, in fact, reduce costs by more efficient items or doing things more efficiently. Anyways, appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. Any other comments? Please step up to the mic, state your name and address for the record. Any callers calling in, please press star six to unmute yourself, state your name and address for the record. Please stick to the public hearing of the 2026 preliminary budget.
Kimberly Goheen Elben, just a quick note about that slippery paint on the crosswalks. Is there a way to put sand or grit into the paint? That might help. So, and, and while I am on the phone, and forgive me, but on this new agenda that I printed out, we just had a public hearing before the ordinance of the Fourth and Eighth Streets. And it is not on the agenda. So I'm kind of confounded as to where that agenda, the public hearing was that I had spoken on. I'd like a call tomorrow and have somebody explain that. So my personal concern is any more adding taxes to the citizens of Les Center. We're taxed to death along with higher food costs, higher gas, higher property taxes, which in turn, for those who rent their property, affects higher rent. My main concern, of course, is getting an audit as to how and where are the indigent funds going. And I'll say again, these funds are not working for my son, Cleve Goheen Rango, as he is a Les Center citizen and is not reaping adequate indigent defense. I, in fact, I believe what you're doing to my son is criminal. So I'm doing other facets to help that. I have read that when a citizen or the public makes a complaint such as this and is made to elected officials such as you, it must be addressed and some sort of relief must be made. So on the record, I have made a request to investigate where our indigent funds are actually going as far as Cleve Goheen Rango's case. I want funding for a study, and I mentioned it earlier, for the Lewis River and the wastewater dumped there. So some sort of environmental and ecology study. I know that's going to cost money, but it's very important for our earth, isn't it? There's going to be people down there swimming. The, the budget also involves the Planning Commission and what they put forth. And I want to be transparent to the public that the phones there at the, when they have the Planning Commission meetings need repair. I'll repeat that. They need to be repaired. It's been an ongoing situation for at least two to three months that I know of, that when I had to speak over the phone, it's very echoey. There was issues. We had to stall for 10 minutes, start the meeting late and this and that. That's not good. So we need to put some monies into those, that phone repair for those of us that speak at the Planning Commission meetings, such as I did on Monday's regular meeting, this last Monday, where I was on the phone for over an hour and a half, actually. And the commission could hear me, but I could not hear them or any public comments. I was very patient, to tell you the truth, that whole time during this hour and a half, while a commissioner actually called me on my phone. Somehow she got in without a ring or anything, just tapped right into my phone.
Thank you, Kimberly.
Well, I'd like, I need to finish this, and I don't think it was my three minutes. But I'll say that they said there was a quorum and there was no, there was a quorum, they said. And now I hear there's no quorum, and I want.
Thank you. There's, there's another one where she'll be able to speak then too. Okay. Any other comments from the audience? Please step up to the mic. All right. Seeing as there is no other comments from the audience, I would like to close the public comment at 7:56 PM. Turn this back over to council. Council, do you have any questions for Peter or Riley or even myself? And before I say that, I do want to remind you, I guess it's kind of a reminder. It's, it's a reminder to the audience as well. Leadership changes happen. We just had council reelections or elections happen, and there were people that didn't challenge others. I take that as either a sign that people are happy with the leadership of the city or that people have other things in life that they deem more important. I will state this, my time being on the council from 2018 until 2023, the budget was always doom and gloom. We were looking at bankruptcies, literally bankrupt by 2025. Right? And this last year was the first year, besides if you count COVID money or not having police and saving that money from the fund. Last year was the first year the city actually put money in its coffers of upwards of three quarters of a million dollars. This year, we would be able to do the same, but we need to spend about $6.7 million or more on that wastewater plant. So we have to pull the 400,000 out. So we won't be putting as much away for a rainy day fund because that rainy day is here. I just want to keep that in mind as you guys are having your conversations and speaking to public. And then I always encourage the public to get ahold of me. I'll sit down with any of you. I don't have a problem, even Kimberly. She wants to have a conversation that's civil. I'll sit down right there and we'll talk. I don't turn anybody down and say, no, thanks. I actually sit down and talk with them. I think most of you know that because I've had conversations with quite a few of you in here. So please reach out to Hannah at the front desk, Pete, or any of the staff there and schedule a meeting. I'll be glad to sit down with each of you. Anyways, council, please, I'll turn this back over to you guys and let you guys have your conversation and give us a direction.
Now, I was thinking about some of the comments that were made tonight. And I commented earlier on how I was pretty confident that the, the Budget Committee worked pretty hard to get it to where it was. In my career, I've spent 27 years in public service, 10 of it in management, being responsible for budgets. And there's been several times over that 10 years that we've been said, told, all right, what would a, what would a 1%, 5% and 10% cut look like? And generally, my answer, my answer to that is another question, what don't you want done? And so I guess that's what I want to ask everybody in here is, if you want to see what budget cuts look like, let's start with what don't you want to do? Do we not want to maintain the sewer plant? Do we not want to replace the crosswalks? Do we want to stop mowing Holly Park? Because we can save a ton of money by doing all of that. But it's. Because we can save a ton of money by doing all of that, but it's going to affect the livability of the town. And you can't with especially when you're looking at a a a city with the amount of employees that we had, you can't stop buying paper clips or sharpening lawnmower blades or buying salt brine for the for the tanks and save any measurable amount of money. It's pennies. You have to cut people if you want to really save money. And I don't know. I don't think we can afford to do that. So you know, to look at at blaming leadership for not being able to come up with something to cut, especially when there's nobody else that wants to do this. There was one, one person came out of the city to run for three positions that were available, right? I'd have been glad to have some competition and maybe lost. Hey, then I wouldn't have to sit up here and say this kind of stuff, but here I am, and I'm going to work hard for the next four years. But in my career, whether it was before I was in management or not in management, we've been consistently asked to do more with less. We're still going to offer the same amount of services, but you're going to do it with fewer people. And I know the commander over here has had the same exact experience that that I have. How are you going to do this? How are you going to meet the demands of the citizens, the 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 public, the 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 population, what we need to do to keep it a livable place and do it with less money? The only way you can do it is with less people, and I don't think it's worth it. So I do think that we have worked hard to look at this budget to see if there was anything that can be cut. And there are certain things that we can, we can take all that stuff off the bridge if we want and save a little bit of money. It'll cost us something to take it down, but it's pretty. I like to see it when I come in to town. I like the fact that Holly Park is one of the most beautiful parks in the county, especially for the the sports fields. There is no other park that looks as nice as as ours does, and that's because of what our our staff is doing and that we give them the budget to work with. So I think that it's good to ask those questions. I really do. And I hope that that we've provided the answers to give some comfort to at least those in this room. I think there's a lot of people out there that don't care because nobody wanted to run for our spots, but I hope that gives people the confidence to know that we're trying to do the right thing up here. So thank you.
Thank you, Casey. That's exactly what I thought.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, and I've I've heard comments from Public Works, and I know that there's times where the season changes and they could definitely use two more guys or or ladies, right? They could use two or three more because the amount of change in a season, how much workload that puts on them. But they don't, they they know that they're not going to do that. They that's just too much to have all year, so they have to do it with the crew they have. And those guys and and gals are busting their butts all day, all day. So I I know that, you know, Tracy, leading that team, is is doing what she can with, you know, the amount of people she's allowed to hire and have on her team, so.
What I've seen in my work career too, working for the sheriff's office, when you start losing people and cutting people and other people have to work three times harder, it totally lowers the morale.
Yeah, I was. Yeah, exactly. The stress, somebody can't, you know, take off because they're really sick. Oh, I can't. I gotta go in and put stress on my whole, you know, team. Yeah, I do it. I'm a director of a school, less teachers, less, you know, people to help with kids. People need to take time off. If you can't, then they're going to quit, and that's just not a way to build a long lasting team. So.
And that's why it's called a balanced budget.
Right.
Right? So we balance the budget and actually have surplus.
And take care of the people you have.
Not only that, though, we are, we're doing stuff a little bit differently that we're planning things out in the future for replacements, right? Like the street sweeper, take that for instance, the Public Works has needed a new street sweeper, yet Tracy's crew over there just keeps Frankenstein-ing it together. We're we've got duct tape and baling wire and we're going to town. And that's because they're $200,000 and they don't last long, right? So we're doing everything we can. At some point, we need to start looking at that replacement. That's why there's these other budgets in there that says, hey, these parts only last so long, and this is what it's going to cost to replace them over the time period. So that's one of the things we're doing with the wastewater. That that has never been done. We're actually, we'll have a plan with what's coming at you to replace this type of stuff and put us on a schedule, and we'll know so that Casey or or I'm sorry, Councilor Kasperg and others like him that come after and won't go there or ask that same question. Well, how long does a pump last? And how come we're holding on to it for 22 years and didn't think of replacing it? Well, it'll be in that plan.
Yeah.
Right? These are steps that we are changing, and it does affect the budget, right? But we're not affecting it so much that we're going into the negative. We're not balanced, and we're not having to pull and draw money out to to make it work.
Right. And it's not fair to you that this happened in the middle of your, you know, term as well. So it's like you're having to figure it all out at the same time. So it's not like you've been in this seat for, you know, 15 years, and why didn't you have a plan 15 years ago, mayor? Like, you know, that's not the case, you know?
You know, I think that sometimes when when I was going through this going, wow, okay, this is going to come back and reflect. But really, I think people are smarter than that. I think people actually understand that every person that sits in this seat or your seat or that seat, we're handed these types of problems because some of this stuff is not foreseeable. Right? Or people don't think of that. We're human. We're allowed to make mistakes. We're we're not robots sitting up here. Neither was the last group or the group before or the group before that, right? Everybody was trying to make the right decisions at the right time for the circumstances they were handed.
Yeah.
And I believe they do a pretty good job. Every once in a while, we we make a mistake. And I don't think that'll ever change, but as long as we have people in place like Tracy and Pete and, you know, the the staff that we have, and we start those plans going forward, we help mitigate that process and those problems in the future for future counselors and futures mayors. And I've said it before, the 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 point of sitting in this seat is to make things easier for the next group that comes in, not rougher, not harder. Right? And and I think we're doing that, and I think we're achieving it. I mean, we we've done some great things this last couple of years, and you're going to hear me speak about it at the the last meeting of the year there at the community center. I I don't want to spoil it, so I don't want to go into it. But yeah, I think we're on the right track, and I I I agree with what Casey said and and Myrna and and all of you. I think I think we did sit back and we did look at what needed to be cut and go, no, that's not going to happen. We need to go back to the drawing board here. And then we bring it back and and things were like, okay, that works better. You know, those are things that the public doesn't get to see because we're sitting behind these doors and we're having these little committee meetings to go over budgets. I mean, you know, there are times when people can come in and sit down and and just listen, and they'd probably be amazed at how many people or how much conversation is actually taking place during some of these types of meetings. But I will shut my mouth and turn it back over to you guys. Pete, do you need any direction on this tonight?
Only if city council has a consensus for some changes that that they see in the budget. Otherwise, we'll move forward with this. There's one more change you will see before the next meeting. We are collecting hotel motel tax, and we haven't expended any of that, so it's been coming into the general fund. I think overall, we have about $3,000 that we've collected.
Does that come from like Airbnb's or?
Yeah, yeah. So there's a, there's a process to be able to expend those dollars. And because of our population where it's at, we don't have to have an advisory committee. City council can function as the committee. There is a process, though, you have to go through where you advertise to the public. The money can be used for, you know, marketing, tourism events, and the goal of that money is to bring folks in from outside the jurisdiction to come to events here in the center.
Travel.
Right. And there are other things you can use the money for. For instance, some communities use it for visitor centers. But really, it's tourist related, and I need to do a little bit more research because usually you have that process where you get the applications in. City council would, you know, review those applications and make a determination what should be funded or not. We're going to put the expenditure line in the budget for those funds, but I do need to seek legal advice to see if we can go through that procedure after the budget is adopted, because there's no way we'll have it in place by next Wednesday. So if we're not able to do it legally, then those funds will just sit there and not be touched. If we are able to move forward, we'll advertise to the public. We'll have some information to city council to talk about what your role is in administering those funds or awarding those funds. And yeah, we'll we'll extend them if we if we can. It would be a you know, the idea is to bring people into La Center, have them spend money, enjoy some of our festivities that we have going on, and it can be a positive thing. Right now, there's not a lot of money there. You know, we're talking about $3,000 over, I think, two, two and a half years we collected. But, you know, if some of those hotels come in within our jurisdiction, that can expand. Yeah. So anyway, just one other item I forgot to mention.
All right. Thank you, Pete. Then we don't need any motions at this point. We just continue on for next meeting to pass the budget?
Correct.
Any other questions, comments, concerns, conversation for that topic?
Yeah. Thank you to all the staff for all your, you know, the committee and everybody for doing all the work that they do. I know it's a lot of work. I mean, I think we're doing pretty good. Seems dismal as some people may think. I don't know. Maybe I'm I'm my head or my head's in the clouds. I don't know. But I counted 53 bolted action items that Tracy had in her presentation today, so I think she's staying busy. I don't know.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I mean, if you go back and even think about that, we've made cuts in staff and the other members, exactly what Casey was just talking about, have actually picked up that slack, right? We don't have a supervisor in public works anymore. We have Tracy. And we have two leads that come and answer to Tracy. So she's already taken on more work. Same with Pete. Same type of thing. So we've already made those cuts. All right. With that, I'll go ahead and move on to the next part on the agenda there, unless you have any other comments or questions that you'd like to talk about. Okay. So that brings us to the public hearing for the 2026 revenue sources, and this will be Mr. Peter Voice will be presenting the property tax information. Peter, Laura's yours.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we did go over some of the revenue numbers in the last presentation. Right now, I wanted to look more directly at the property tax. So repeat myself on the other revenue figures we talked about. So what we're looking at is a we're asking for a 1% property tax increase. That amount would total $7,549. The 2025 levy, we were looking at 754,870 as a total. With the 1% increase, we're looking at another $7,549. The estimate of new construction came in at $41,596, which would bring the 2026 levy amount to, if the 1% is is adopted, $804,015. That would put the levy rate at 0.766. Last year or the current year's 2025 was slightly higher at 0.786. So that is really what we're looking at. I should also note that you know, the city property tax is really a small slice of what a citizen sees on their property tax bill. It equates to somewhere between eight and nine percent. You know, the rest of the property taxes go, you know, to the center schools, state schools. You're looking at 32 and 26% respectively. So, you know, the the $7,500 doesn't seem like a a large dollar amount, but over time, you know, it it does make a difference. City council would have some options. You can adopt up to 1%. You could choose not to take the 1% this year and bank that and take it in a future year. So that 7,500 could be taken next year if you decide to bank it. Or you could decide to leave the property tax where it is at this point. So that that's kind of the short and sweet of it. We are required to hold this public hearing, so I encourage you to listen to the citizens and take their input. We are required to adopt an ordinance before November 30th. And so that will, you'll be seeing that next week. I enclosed a a copy of the ordinance, so you folks would be able to get a preview and the citizens would be able to get a preview. So really, that's that's what I have for you regarding property tax. If anyone has questions, we'll sure try to answer those for you.
Thank you, Peter. Counsel, do you have any questions or comments?
When was the last increase?
I believe last year we adopted the 1%.
We we've done it every every year. It's the one tax that I know the council, since I've been on council, has actually agreed to increase. Right? Because you're talking $7,000 CPI hits and and the raises go out every year for employees, and it's a lot more than $7,000 out of a year.
Sure.
Right?
Right. So I think I think last year was in the, it was less than 7,000. It was in the $6,000 range somewhere.
Yeah, and we, yeah, did the full 1%.
Right.
Yeah.
Can you explain the the banking it option that you mentioned?
Sure.
I don't know.
Yeah.
I don't understand that one.
So it's an option. You know, if you decided not to increase the property tax by 1%, you could just, you know, let that $7,500 go. If you pass an ordinance to bank the $7,500, council next year could take the 1% increase and go back and get that $7,500 again, so you could receive that money in the future. Does that make sense?
Kind of.
Right, so.
It's for that year's dollar amount, though, correct?
Right.
Because otherwise you'd be compounding the interest on you if you kept.
Right, so yeah, it's it's just something the tool the legislature gave councils and governing bodies. You know, if you thought for whatever reason the community couldn't handle that 1% increase that current year, but you thought maybe things would improve in the future, you'd have the option of going back to get that $7,500 plus, you know, the 1% for that current year you're in. If you bank it, you're not required to take it in the future. It just gives you the option to do that.
Yeah, I think of like the crash of '08, right? Nobody can afford anything at that point. You're definitely probably going to defer that. Counselor Servaney, were you were you servant at that time at the during the crash of '08? Did you guys raise it? I'm not expecting you to remember. Yeah, we did not. Yeah, see. So that that serves a purpose at that point. You do remember. I wasn't sure. I'm not insinuating anything. I forget what I had for breakfast yesterday, so don't worry.
Well, I'm sure in 2020, yeah, they did as well.
There were a number of years in the past.
Yeah, that we did, yeah.
Do I understand what you're saying, Peter, that if you don't raise it this year, then next year you can still do the 1% tax and then and raise it enough to get what you didn't get the year before?
Right, so you'd have $7,500. So we're talking about 2026 right now. So you'd have the $7,500 from 2026. When you get into 2027, you could opt to take that 1% for for that year. Plus, you could say, okay, we want that $7,500 from 2026 now. So really, it would be almost a double. So really, it would be almost a double increase in that one year.
Yeah, that's what, yeah.
That might be harder for people to take than just doing it 1% a year than to having to go back and double.
Right, it, it could be. And like I said, the council would have the option of exercising that amount that's banked and taking it or opting not to.
Do we have to have a motion of some sort that states that we'd like to bank it or?
It would have to be included in the ordinance that we're going to present. Well, it's in the packet tonight, but we'd have to amend that ordinance to bank the funds instead of taking them. Right now, the ordinance is written to take the 1% increase.
When you bank it, do, does the city earn interest on what's banked?
No.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So they're not actually taking the funds, it's just banking the ability.
Right.
You can, so like you said, like the next year, you can pull that $7,500.
Right, so exactly. So it would mean that we do not, that the county would not collect that $7,500 in tax. So there's no interest that's occurring, it's.
It's an option to defer it for a year. And then you have another option of, do you have to take it that year or can you defer it for several years? Okay.
Ouch. So, you know, the thing to consider is, you know, the other thing you should have in mind is, while the $7,500 may seem, you know, a small slice of the city revenue, over time, if you defer that $7,500 or decide not to take it, that next year's 1% is calculated on what you received the previous year. So it wouldn't include that $7,500 increase.
Oh, right.
So over time, it could have a compounding effect that would be. It, yes, it would include, include growth. So in this case, we're, I think, I said, we're talking about, let's see, new construction, yes, 41,596. So, yeah, so that is coming because that's new assessed construction that happened within the jurisdiction.
Interesting.
So banking doesn't affect, affect the new construction dollars that would still come to the city.
Liz, I have a, I have a spare one right here. Yeah. Thank you, Peter. Any other conversations amongst each other or anything? Okay. At the time of 8:23, I'd like to open up the public hearing to comments from the audience. Anybody that would like to speak on behalf of the 2026 revenue sources, please step up to the podium, state your name and address for the record.
Al Phillips, 36016, who was in the good group. It's Al's belief that if I don't come up here or people like Dennis don't come up here and question what you do, then you're just going to give a rubber stamp, you're not going to think about it. You know, I tell by your comments, you know, Public Works does an excellent job, they do work that bus off. You know what? And that's what I expect them to do. And that's what all should expect them to do. All these people over here, they're getting paid. I expect them to, you know, get, or bang for the buck out of them, guys. Some cases are hopeless, but, you know, I wouldn't point out any. But that's why I come up a lot of times. Sometimes I come up to joke around, but, you know, just make sure that, yeah, you guys are doing a good. If any of you think I don't have enough nerve to come up and tell you, you're not doing a good job, you better start thinking again, you know? Because I have, when I do scream again, I'll, I'll make it plain and clear that I disagree with you. You know, but, you know, part of the reason I come up here, you know, is to make you guys think, oh, boy, this, you know, if I don't come up here, I'm thinking, well, shoot, nobody's coming up here? You know, you guys just sitting back on your laurels saying, well, we're doing a great job, nobody ran against me this time. And I heard that from my councilman. And I says, you know, in the back of my mind, I says, God, not paying attention, we got apathy going on here. You know, people don't want your, God bless you guys for taking the jobs that you're doing. I think you're doing a pretty good job, but that doesn't mean I can't force you or encourage you to do just a little bit better. And, you know, that's why I get up a lot of that. Thank you, God in despair.
Thank you, Al. That's a hard one to follow. Anyone else? Ah, Dennis, come on up.
Dennis Hill, 1316, was all the place. Again, I really don't think that this increase is that significant. I think that we all know that oil prices, if you need to find, I think we're all going to be pretty much here, going to be able to pay that. But I think that more than that, it's important, and I haven't seen this council do it yet, I would like to see something up on the screen as a PowerPoint presentation that says, this is why the mayor and the city council thinks this is a great idea. These are the reasons why we might need this additional funds. Here are the points, here are the bullet points, why you, the citizens of the center, ought to go along with us on this issue. Not just, again, you, you're going to do what you're going to do, but I think you owe it to us as citizens to lay it out and says, hey, we're not just doing this because we can, we're doing it because this is the right thing to do for these reasons, and we're doing it because we think we need this additional funds because of these reasons. So again, I would encourage you to think about that, come up with something that, I hope we have a bigger audience, is I, I appreciate everyone that's here, because I think it's important that they're here. And I, they're, these folks that are here care about the center. They care about what you say and how you vote. I hope so, I do. The other thing is, again, I, I appreciate Casey's brightness and sharing with the city. And again, I'm not looking for nickel, hard, or paper clips and pencils and so on either. But again, nothing's been presented to this city and the leadership here or citizens as, here's why we're making these changes. I was a city councilman years ago, I've been on budget, I've done budget for this, I know what's involved, it's involved, it's a big deal. And there's a lot of discussion goes on, but I think, though, transparency is what we don't have here. You guys communicate between yourselves, you talk between yourselves, but we as, as citizens are not seeing what you, what's, why you came about with that answer, why you came up with that particular decision to either increase or decrease something. Share that with us, please. I think we all would appreciate that and you all would get some additional stars. Silver or gold, perhaps. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to step up the mic, state your name and address for the record? The staff did just present that. Right now, it's a public comment, though. Let's let them talk. Any callers calling in, please press star six on Meet Yourself and State Your Name and Address for the Record. Please stick to the 2026 Revenue Source topic.
Kimberly Goheen, Alabama, I absolutely agree with Al and especially what Mr. Hill was saying. The presenter, and, you know, God bless all you folks, bottom line is, we respect that position. We don't always have to like what you do. The fact is, is you don't have to like what we do either, but we're the boss. We get to stay, we get to speak, and you should actually listen to us. I remember when you passed the Timmons in downtown thing and you didn't listen to us. I think that's still going to be a hot topic. Tonight, though, the presenter, and God bless him and everything, was not really transparent in telling us what, what, like Mr. Hill said, what are, what are the bullet points? Why do you want to do this? What are the benefits? What are the, you know, deficits in this? Frankly, I don't want to pay any more taxes. And then it's, you, you, it almost sounds like it's going to go up 1% every year for the rest of my life. So we need better explanations on this. It's not just to present something that's in black and white, short little paragraph, and then we're supposed to understand it. You're doing our business. That's why you were elected and you are to respect us. You are not to ever put us down, not with any demeaning way, not that you're trying to and stuff, but in certain ways that some, certain people can talk, it's very demeaning. And this is our right and our duty. I, I like to stress, it's our duty. And in fact, everybody in there should pull five more people each to sit in there and do their duty. Why does it have to be only the few? Not that the few 1%ers don't get something done, we know that in our history. I mean, a- as far as the lightings and stuff, you said you could take those kind of stuff. Well, I'd like to see white bulbs instead of white, blue bulbs. I want to see red, white, and blue for veterans. I want to see it for the 250th anniversary next year, too. Red, white, and blue.
26 revenue.
Well, that was the resource, so we're talking about sources, where funding sources are and where they're going. Also, you mentioned the street sweep, the same thing. I still don't know how much that cost me to have you guys do that for one run, that you're going to turn around and ask for grants because of one run. And so we want transparency, that's all. Otherwise, if you don't give transparency, we're going to question it and wonder, well, why didn't you tell us? There's got to be a reason. Frankly, nobody trusts the government anyway, so let's be more trustworthy, let's do those bullet points. And when you're doing our business, we want answers and that's the right, and everybody bring five more people in next week. Thank you, God bless.
Thank you. Any other callers calling in, please press star six, uh, uh, meet yourself, state your name and address for the record. Clerk, do we have any other callers?
No other callers.
Thank you. Clerk, are there any public comments to be read?
No public comments to be read.
Okay. At the time, 8:32, I'd like to close the public comments and send this back over to council. Council, any other conversations? Any questions?
No, I don't have any questions, but I think there's some really good points that have been made tonight. I agree that in the overall budget, it's an insignificant amount, but that also might be the amount that, that ends up being a shortfall for next year. And I think over the last couple of budgets, you know, we haven't, we haven't had the shortfalls that have occurred in, in the past. But I don't think we had one in this for '24. But, you know, we're right there. It's, it's very, very, very balanced and one wrong thing could end up tipping that over to the side. So I think those are all really good things to consider that, that folks brought up tonight. And it's something that I'm going to have to think about. And if anybody has anything else to, to say, I'd sure like to hear it, but.
I personally.
You know, it's a couple bucks a person, really, over the year, but, you know, maybe, maybe that's a couple bucks that you don't have, or you could get yourself a cup of coffee if you needed to, or something like, something like that, I don't know. But, you know, it's the tipping point, you know? Is it more of a morale issue or is it more of a trying to, to build that, that safety net just a, a little bit at a time? You know, we could, we could wreck a truck on accident and, you know, now all of a sudden we have to replace it and it's a $30,000, $40,000 shortfall that we run into, so. Or I don't know, we just bought a lawnmower, too. That thing was around $10,000, something like that, wasn't it? Yeah.
We just bought a dump truck as well.
That's true.
Yeah, no, I'm in agreement to a certain degree on that. I, I personally, I am tired of paying higher and higher taxes. I'm watching many cities and states not be able to balance their budget. I watched the city of Vancouver state that they were $44 million in debt, or deficit, and turn around and obligate themselves to a $21 million land purchase and a city hall update, you know?
$750,000 update.
Yeah. Yeah, and to me, that's not what you do with your checkbook. I don't feel that this city is doing that. I feel the city is actually doing their due diligence and looking at that. And, you know, to Mr. Hill's comments there, we do present that stuff. We present it in the budget, you can see the numbers, right? You can see what, where, where the numbers are at and what they're lined up for. There is no hidden meetings that are taking place scheming to see how much more money we can get out of it. We, we're trying to just operate and still sustain the lifestyle that the residents are accustomed to. I'm not trying to glorify it or make it any worse than where it's at. We're actually trying to make it better. But I am, I'm at a point where I'm just tired of paying taxes and on top of taxes, on top of the tax. I mean, it, you know, this goes through and you guys decide this is what we want to do, I'm going to tell my wife and my wife's probably going, oh, you guys are raising taxes again, you know? And that's on a statement. But we're going to go in the direction of what the council states. And I, and I do see your point.
Led by the people.
Right, well, I, I do see a council member, Casper's point, you know, if you need another dump truck because one blows up and we got to spend $40,000 on it, well, we were $33,000 is all we had, so we were $7,000 short, right? There, there are those times that can happen. Just the public needs to understand that we're actually up here doing our due diligence, listening to them, and then thinking what's best for the future, so.
Well, I think it's, it's part of the checks and balances, right? That we can only take a max 1%. They don't say, oh, so that you can take 10% and then just really wreck havoc on people's budgets and, you know, their overall, you know, where they choose to live based on their council. So there's that checks and balance, you can only get up to 1%. You can do that each year. So if you're not doing it each year to, or not always to the one, you know, all the way to the 1%, but at least getting something, we all know, obviously inflation costs are going to cost more for the city, too. Just, we're not a business, we're not here to try to make money, the things that we need to buy to run the city are also increasing. So if we're not slowly increasing that amount at, at an amount that is pretty irrelevant to most of us, we are not doing our due diligence by asking for that because over time, that's going to compound and increase and help us as opposed to us coming to you in five years going, oh, we need a 10% property tax increase, folks. And then every, nobody can afford it. But this is an affordable way, over time, the city can get the funds that they need and there's never enough. So I think it's, I think it's a checks and balance that keeps, keeps it all working well.
Riley, what was CPI for 2024? Do you know off the top of your head? There you go. And we're doing a 1% increase. Yeah. So we lost.
Yeah. But right, yeah, that makes sense, but that's why I'm saying, that's why it's not like, you know, we could go and say, oh, do a half percent, but why? That's not going to be enough. 1% is not going to make or break, and I don't know, maybe there's a thing for low-income families, maybe they can, I, I think that they get property, I, I don't know how that works, but I'm sure that they have, yeah, they have support out there, so it's not, you're just hitting the middle class and upper class again. We're used to it by now, so.
Okay. Any other comments? All right.
Comment, I would like to know if the developer.
Public comment is over. Thank you, Kimberly. Thank you, clerk. Pete, is this something that we are, this is for November 19th, so this is another one that we're continuing, so, okay?
So if council has some consensus about what you want to do in the ordinance, if you could let us know now, we could amend the ordinance that you see in the packet to reflect that next week. You still have the option to do it next week, but if we don't hear consensus to make a change, we'll bring the ordinance you see in the packet. You can still change it at the meeting. But.
I think our choice should be what was presented today in the packet next week.
Move forward with what's presented, in my opinion.
Yeah, me too.
There's no reason to.
Okay, seeing consensus, so we'll leave it as is, but council still has the ability next week to make a change if it deemed so.
Mm-hmm. Okay, so if any, uh, public wants to reach out to the council members and give them your opinion on it, that'd be great. Uh, they would love to hear it, so would I. Okay. That, uh, we'll close that portion out. We'll move on. Is there any unfinished business, counsel? How about any new business? Would you guys like to adjourn the meeting?
I would. I've said too much. I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
It's been moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Thank you, counsel. Thank you, everyone.